We'd like to call the regular meeting to order. Stand if you're able for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silent prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. The first item on the agenda is a public hearing. This is for our special assessment levy. I'm going to declare the public hearing open at 7:04 PM. Are there any residents that have any comments on the special assessment levy that we do every year in the different districts for street lighting and cameras? We're required by law to do this. Hearing no comments, I would close the public hearing. Clerk Rowe?
I have Resolution 2023-14, the special assessment levy, whereas the Charter Township of Ypsilanti Board of Trustees on September 19th, 2023, held a public hearing on the proposed special assessment role prepared by the deputy assessor, a copy of which is on file at the clerk's office and advertising the same in the newspaper of record in the township. And whereas on September 19th, 2023, the Ypsilanti Township Board heard comments on said proposal's special assessment role prepared by the deputy assessor, now therefore be resolved that the proposed special assessment role prepared by the deputy assessor for the Charter Township of Ypsilanti be adopted, and the amount set forth on the special assessment role will be levied on the 2023 winter tax roll. So move the resolution.
Support.
We have a motion support. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item is public comments. Each person can speak for three minutes, and you can also speak on each agenda item. Are there any public comments? Ms. Kaiser?
My name is Arloa Kaiser, and I'm township resident, and I am concerned about the township people's safety from our county walking along Grove Road by, it's one of the churches anyway, on the walking side where the houses and that are. Along the curb, there was a hole, one foot wide by approximately one foot deep. So I didn't know who to call. I came to the township. They called the county. Okay, so I left here, went home, started walking the path, and along comes somebody in a truck from the county. The guy sees the hole, blah, 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 but never put a cone or anything to indicate that hole. And about maybe 25 feet, I'm guessing, there's a bus stop in front of the church. So people go across Grove Road, and when I came this evening to the township hall, there still was no cone there. And when I talked to him, he said there was a question of who was responsible for it. Who cares who's responsible for it? Somebody should be notified to put a cone there for the safety of everyone, whether it's his job, isn't he for the safety of the community, whether it's his job or not if he's standing there? And I am concerned about this. And like I said, when I came this evening, there was still nothing over that hole.
Okay.
And kids run across the Grove Road and that type of thing, so who knows who could get hurt? So who's going to be responsible for that?
Thank you, Ms. Kaiser. We'll send an email to the road commission, or we'll take a cone and put it over there. But we need to find out what's causing the hole. That's my biggest concern.
Right. He questioned whether it was a hole with, like a sinkhole or something.
Uh huh.
No, but it's a hole that somebody can dug.
Okay.
Hi, Monica Roseliam, 2150 Chevrolet. I was just coming up to the mic quickly to support again the request to seek proposals for municipal police force feasibility study. As I spoke about on previous occasions, I am very pleased that the township is at least looking at their options. I think that is something that any municipality that is looking to save money for taxpayers and also provide robust services as it relates to law enforcement should at least pursue. And I'm very happy to see the township is pursuing it in the study. I look forward to, after the study is complete, hopefully that will be at a meeting where the public can also attend that meeting and ask questions. And yeah, that's pretty much all I have to say, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Hi, Martin Spalding, 1216 South Harris. First off, we've had a number of power outages, five this year already, four last year, five the year before that. We've had transformers on poles go down the service drive where they have all that buildup of bushes and hedges and trees. And I asked a worker one day, why are you working in these trees? Aren't they supposed to be cut back? And he didn't, he just said, well, we just work. They can hardly get in there to do any work. Now down Harris, we've got vines growing up over the lines, two houses down from 1216 where I live. And there's even the third house, or four houses down from where I live, there's a tree pushing, you could see it pushing one of the lines right up in the air. So we've had a transformer blow, and we were without service on Harris for five days because it wasn't, it wasn't bad enough, but transformer blew, and that's just, we have inadequate DTE servicing our area, you know, preventive maintenance on the trees and that kind of stuff. So when we get it, I mean, the average for us to be out of power is three to four, maybe five days. So we always, we lose our groceries in our refrigerators. We never get reimbursed for that. So that's just one item, and then the waste management item were the recyclables, they come along with the truck, and I was out there, and then Karen Winters was out there, and the guy, we were getting our bins, our regular bins, and then the recycle truck came. Well, I noticed down the street, all this stuff, waste on the ground. Well, he dumps them automatically, and then I have to go pick up plastic, papers, five items, and then go next door, Karen's got her bin, and she's looking, and the only time the guy got out of his truck is he couldn't reach the bin. And he gets out of the truck, and Karen picks up this paper and weighs it in front of him. He doesn't care. He dumps, he moves the bin over so he can dump it, and then that one paper's left. So I followed him all the way down Harris because he goes down to Harris. I mean, there's stuff, all this stuff on the streets. It gets in our yards, but waste management, they don't care.
They should pick it up.
Matter of fact, I even knocked on the guy's truck and said, look at this. Are you going to do anything about this? He said, no. I said, that's okay, I'll report. I've called and emailed waste management, and I've called and emailed DTE about these issues, and we're not getting any service. So when our power goes out, we get very upset because in our area, that portion of Harris, we always go down. I mean, it's not, it's not, this summer, it's not, departments, they'll still, they'll have power. Sometime, sometime the houses, just the street directly behind us, I forget the name of it, but the houses that back up to us, if we go out power, they'll go without power. But everybody else around us, they may have power. And so those are just a few of the items that I have, but I'll let somebody else come up here. We're not getting, we need you to step up and get these people to take care of these issues because we can't do it without your help. I mean, if we complain, I mean, we got, it's a matter of record that we have, but we get, we get no help. I never got a call or email back from waste management. I never got anything back from DTE. So they don't care, but we have to live with it.
Make sure we follow up, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? We do have areas that have frequent outages, and we've asked for them to be analyzed. I know West Willow has them. This time is a little bit better, but that area always gets it, one out. On the south side, always goes out, so they need to check the reliability of that line. But clearing it would absolutely help, so we'll make sure that we report that. And we have a meeting coming up with waste management because you're not the only one that's had issues. So we do have a meeting as far as quality of service, so we will make sure we follow up on that.
I could add that the issue you're probably talking about is our yard waste. We've had, we've had weeks where it's never picked up at all, all of Harris out there, and then...
We'll add yard waste, too.
Yeah, the yard waste is terrible. I mean, sometimes it's not picked up, of course, your clerks probably told you, because I've called about that many a times.
Yep, and when they call the township, we absolutely report it to waste management to have them to go back out, but it's more frequent than it should be.
Exactly.
I agree. Any other public comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. We discussed in the work session tabling the minutes of the August 15th work session in regular meeting. Oh, I'm sorry, Clerk Rowe just reminded me, under other business, we wanted to add a agenda item for the request to approve from HR to do a salary and benefit study for the TPOA and bargaining union. So if it's okay with everyone to add that under other business. So the minutes of the meeting?
Motion to table the minutes.
Support.
Motion, Rowe, support Eldridge. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Statements and checks and treasures report?
So move.
Support.
Motion, Rowe, support Eldridge. Questions or comment? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Attorneys report, Mr. Winters?
Madam Chair, I did receive a letter today from Jason Lafayette, the SME project consultant in regards to Gulf Village. The eastern building has been, in his words, totally razed. I went by there, and I think it's accurate. There's a lot of recyclables and other materials that are going to be, need to be hauled away, but during this interim time period, they have completed all of the asbestos abatement at building number two, and right now, all of the air quality reports are coming in well below the standards that have been set by SME. So the air quality is meeting all that project criteria pursuant to the EPA and other indices that are established by the state of Michigan and by the federal government. According to Jason Lafayette, he expects the second building to be totally demolished by October the 6th. So I think by our next, our first board meeting in October, you'll see a different landscape out there than what we've been used to seeing. And again, this is just obviously the beginning of what, you know, is a long term, it's been a long time coming in regards to the Gulf Village. It's somewhat bittersweet for many people to watch what's happened over there. It was a strong, vibrant shopping center and served the area very well, but it became neglected through the ownership, and this is the end result of what people sometimes refer to as demolition by neglect. In any event, though, we'll move forward with getting cleaned up and going back to court at the right time to seeking money judgment to place on the property to ensure the township has its legal interests protected. But again, the target date is October the 6th, to have the both buildings demolished. And again, everything is going well from an air quality standpoint, and the asbestos abatement has been taken care of in that second building as well. That's already, that's already done. I know there's a long agenda. This is the second item in regards to an upcoming evidentiary hearing this coming Friday involving the litigation that was authorized by the township against Lilly Investments, the owner of 3011 East Michigan Avenue, and Men Like Us. I won't go into detail, there is a scheduled evidentiary hearing. Township attorneys, Dennis McLean and Paul Barnett, have been working very long hours in conjunction with the Sheriff's Department. I think we may have as many as, I think, maybe 16 different subpoenas right now for all the deputies who've been involved in this, are scheduled to testify if need be throughout the day on this coming Friday, starting at nine o'clock. We've also subpoenaed other third parties. Our fire department has been involved, and there's some reports that some of us were not aware of the issues they had encountered. And so on Friday, we're going to go forward with that hearing as authorized by the township board. On a, on a separate issue that does not involve the township, but it's at least one that I want to at least put before you this evening because, because there has been a lot of misinformation in regards to this issue. In regards to the tenant, Men Like Us, there's a separate civil proceeding that was initiated by the property owner, Lilly Investments, against that tenant. Doesn't involve us because that's not our lawsuit, but in that separate lawsuit, it's pending in the 14B District Court. The landlord is seeking to possession of the property from the tenant due to non-payment of $84,000 in back rent. And I'm saying that at this board meeting publicly only because at the last meeting, there was references and statements made that the township was trying to drive this individual out of a business that he had owned and invested, et cetera. And whatever happens between the landlord and the tenant is between the landlord and the tenant. But my point is right now is that that is something that at least right now was, has led to some of the misinformation that has come back around from our office to deal with as well as the township board. But that is something that will happen after our hearing on Friday. And again, my thanks to the staff at the Washtenaw County Sheriff's Department. I know that Shane has been in contact, Lieutenant Shane Peltier with Denny and Paul, and the body cam, body cameras, everything that we've needed to go forward with on Friday. The technology has all been arranged with Judge Connor's courtroom, and so we will let the court decide whether or not what we've gathered for the last two years constitutes a public nuisance, and we believe that it will. So keep the board informed as to the outcome of the hearing.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Hearing none, we have under old business, a second reading of Resolution 2023-12, proposed ordinance 2023-505. It's an ordinance to amend Articles 4, 5, 11, 13, and 15 of the Ypsilanti Township zoning ordinance. First reading was held at the August 15th regular meeting.
Clerk Rowe? I have Resolution 2023-12, a resolution amending the Ypsilanti Township zoning ordinance in reference to proposed ordinance 2023-505, whereas the Township Planning Department staff completed a detailed review of the Township zoning code, and whereas at its regularly scheduled planning commission meeting held July 25th, 2023, the Planning Commission held a public hearing, and whereas the Planning Commission for Ypsilanti Township recommended approval of the zoning ordinance, proposed zoning amendments to the Township zoning code to the Township Board of Trustees at its regular meeting of July 25th, 2023, which changes can be summarized as follows, and they are attached. Now therefore be resolved that the Charter Township of Ypsilanti Board of Trustees does hereby approve ordinance number 2023-505 as attached by amending articles of Township zoning ordinance as noted, replacing it with proposed ordinance 2023-505. I would so move the second reading.
We have a motion and support discussion. Jason's here to answer any questions that we may have. This was approved by the Planning Commission at a public hearing. We had first reading at our last board meeting, and this will be the adoption of it, if approved.
That's correct. And even before that, the Planning Commission formally set the public hearing for that meeting date, which is sort of like an extra layer of due diligence on their behalf of formally setting a public hearing date at the meeting prior to the actual public meeting taking place in order to even give more ample time for comments.
Comments? We discussed this at length in the work session and agreed that we would send a letter to the homes...
Homeowners within the IC district.
That zoning, this would affect in a good way, we think, and just explain it to them so they're aware of, you know, what the options are for the future and what they can still maintain their zoning, of course, as a residential district from now and pass it on to generations if they choose to.
That's right, and we'll, we'll provide them with that letter.
All in, we have to do a roll call vote because it's an ordinance? Hunter?
Yes.
Eldridge?
Yes.
Stamoso, Jess Rowe?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Under new business, we have Resolution 2023-13, a resolution for temporary road closure for the Calvary Baptist Church Festival. Clerk Rowe?
I have Resolution 2023-13, a resolution authorizing the temporary road closure of Rosewood Street between Davis Street and Ecorse Road for the Calvary Baptist Church Fall Festival from 11 to 6 on October 14th, 2023, whereas the Charter Township of Ypsilanti Board of Trustees has approved the temporary road closure of Ypsilanti Township roads as indicated above, and whereas the Driveways, Banners, and Parades Act 200 of 1969 requires the township to authorize an official designated by the resolution to make such a request from the road commission. Now therefore be resolved that the Ypsilanti Township Board of Trustees designates and agrees that Fred Corthers, Calvary Baptist Church facilities manager, be authorized official designee in this instance when the application is made to the Washtenaw County Road Commission for this temporary road closure. So move the resolution.
We have a motion support discussion. Is this open to the public?
Yeah, Madam Chair, this is an event open to the public, and I think this is our third, maybe third year doing it. And this just again, just for, to refresh the board, it allows them to go to the road commission for requests to close the road. I know that Fred has worked with the Washtenaw County Sheriff's Department already to get in place any requirements that they may need, and I heard it was well attended and fun last year.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Number two is the request approval of the benefit and compensation package for our new fire chief, Steve Denzmore.
So move. Support.
Motion, Eldridge, support Rowe.
Good evening. As we discussed in the work session, we have finalized our fire chief hiring process, and there is a compensation package that Mr. Denzmore has signed that I'm bringing to the board for approval tonight with an anticipation start date of next Monday. So we're very excited to have him and looking forward to, to many years.
Questions or comments? The new fire chief is here, if approved, and we welcome you and look forward to moving the fire department forward. And I know Steve Walgren, who's been the acting fire chief, interim fire chief, we really appreciate you and everything you've done as well, so let's go team, right? We have a motion support, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Welcome aboard. Number three is a request to move the community resource coordinator from a pilot position to a regular, non-union, full-time position with an annual salary of $50,000 and to post the position, sorry. Motion, Swanson, support Hunter, discussion. We talked about in the work session, this was a pilot position. The main vision of the position was to connect people and businesses to resources, and it has really proven to be very beneficial to a lot of our residents, and we look forward to having this as a permanent position within the township. The person who was in the pilot position has been working to create a resource center on Holmes Road. It was a former police station, and then they moved the police station to Huron Street here, and the vision is to have a community connection center so residents will be able to go there, working with other nonprofits and agencies in order to help everyone thrive in the township, so.
I would just like to publicly thank Lori for the last year and all the work that she's done, on behalf of the township employees as well. She's done some training for us, and just from HR, I want her to know that we appreciate that.
Thank you. We have a motion support, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Number four is a request to approve the leave time policy addressing PTO accrual for non-union employees hired after January 1st, 2009. Motion, Eldridge? I'm sorry, who's? Support Swanson?
Again, as I mentioned in the work session, this just sets a accrual structure that has not been set for our non-union employees for a number of years, and just allows them to know when they will get increases and what they will be.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Number five is a request to approve the local brownfield revolving fund grant agreement for environmental testing associated with the demolition of the Gulf Village shopping center. Motion, Eldridge, support Rowe? Questions or comments on this? It's a $10,000 grant for the demolition and the testing. Thank you, Jason.
Good evening, Township Board. Jason Aguanjali, the Township's Planning Director. This was a grant that was given by the Downriver Brownfields Consortium, which Washtenaw County's Brownfield Authority is a member of. The original grant was for $20,000, and it was adjusted to allow $10,000 of those dollars to be granted back to the township for the reimbursement of cost overruns for the hazardous materials assessment that was conducted as a part of the environmental due diligence for the Gulf Village demolition project. And so these, the $10,000 has already been, has already been paid to SME as a part of the contract for completing that hazardous material assessment in this. By executing this agreement, it would make the township eligible to recoup the $10,000 from the Washtenaw Brownfield Authority.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Number six, a request to approve the zoning permit for the installation of a garden fence for the new West Willow Neighborhood Association garden.
So move.
Motion, Rowe, support Swanson. This is with the understanding they'll get their permit tomorrow so they could proceed as soon as possible. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Opposed? Motion carries. Number seven is a request to approve the quote from BioCare for the fire department physicals in the amount of $20,826, which is budgeted in line item 206336719005.
So move.
Motion Rowe, support Swanson. And I'm happy to see that there's more testing that's going to happen around cancer for firefighters, and this is an annual testing, three times a year? Twice? No, no, that's... Sure, go ahead. Interim Chief? Okay.
Good evening, Board. Fire Marshal Steve Walgren. So this is in reference to BioCare, which is a mobile physical, mobile doctor's office, basically. They provide all kinds of cancer screenings that are prevalent in firefighters, and ultrasounds as well as blood tests and all that kind of stuff. So appreciate it.
Questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is a request to approve the change order with OHM Advisors for paving at fire station. I think it's with Dome. Is that correct?
It is. OHM. So Matt Parks is here to speak on that with OHM. He's got a really good handle on what that's all about.
Thank you, Chief.
Yeah, and the, good evening, everybody. The change order is with Dome Construction. OHM oversaw the construction out there. Basically, the job's complete. Dome completed their punchless items. The only outstanding item is the closeout of the Washtenaw County Road Commission permit. They did a couple of extra things due to the signal there with a loop, and we think that all the invoices are collected, but I'd need to follow up one more time with them. This change order is essentially an $11,000 increase, but it's within the budget that was approved by the board initially. Essentially, what it boils down to is there was three extra bollards that were up against gas meters that the chief, Chief Copeland at the time, wanted removed and replaced just to freshen them up. And then we did some modifications around the front door entrance. There's some sidewalk and some roof drains that came down in a garden. The chief had their employees, the firefighter employees, move the garden, and we filled in a grass area with additional parking and got all that water away from the building and tied in an extra, a little bit of trench drain. So you can see in there, we had a little bit of extra turf establishment, some extra edge drain, and then the bollards to remove and reset new ones. There were some deductions, items that we didn't use in the contract, about $2,600 worth. So the net change in that total contract was about $11,000. Well, like I said, well within the $202,000 budget that was approved by the board. And the only, like I said, the only thing that I could see us having to come back for before we close out this contract is if the Road Commission's billings exceed the allowance that was set. We found a deteriorated traffic signal loop under the pavement that nobody knew that was there. Road Commission jumped out there and actually installed a new one with Dome's assistance. Dome did that work without charging anything. And then the Road Commission said they would just tack that onto any inspection fees, but I'm not sure if they're actually going to do that or if that is all handled. So that's really the only remaining item, and we're going to close out this job pending approval of this change order and then finalizing paperwork with Dome.
Thank you. Questions or comment?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just Matt, apologies. It's on your letterhead, so I assume that that was how the wording should be. So sorry for making you.
Oh, no big deal.
We have a motion support. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Or did I get the motion support?
So move.
Motion Rowe?
Support.
Support Eldridge. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number nine is a request to approve change order number one with precision cutting for sidewalk shaving in the amount of $27,396.66. Motion Rowe, support Hunter. John?
Good evening. John Heinz, Municipal Services Director. Yes, this is a change order requested for precision concrete cutting to continue the sidewalk shaving efforts in the township for the amount of $27,396.66. This amount was included in the proposal for precision concrete cutting earlier this year to get the Wendell Homes area, Rue Lett and Rue de Ville Boulevard. When they finished that job, they actually came in under their expected amount by just over this amount. So this would use the remaining funds that was approved by the board earlier this year to finish out this area, starting in the West Willow Neighborhood. It would focus on Tyler Road, and then if approved tonight, I would meet with Ben Johnson from Precision Concrete Cutting to localize some streets, to focus on that would be able to complete most of the streets instead of stopping halfway once they got to that total amount. And they would propose to do the work in November when their crew is back in the township. So it'd give us ample time to send out literature to the streets that would be focused on.
Questions or comment? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item is a request to approve the agreement with OHM Advisors to provide professional services for the species relocation for the township, our Pacific Center Pond renovation in the amount of $9,000.
So move.
Motion Rowe?
Support.
Support Ryan?
Hello again. Yeah, you should have in your packet a proposal we prepared. This is basically what it sounds like. Just we have a team of ecologists at OHM that'll go in, set traps, and then slowly with the assistance of the township, and we'll work with John pretty closely on this, to pump down the pond this fall, prior to the winter or early, early spring construction, to capture some of the non-invasives and then relocate them to a habitat within the township. So we actually did this before, going back to the 80s when the pond was lined initially. It was constructed in the 70s and then relined in the mid 80s, and this same service was done. And when we surveyed the pond, it was full of wildlife. So goal is, is to get in there, and really the key time to do it is either fall or early spring. And because we want to be under construction this winter and the cooler months, now is the time to act. So.
Questions or comment? Do you get a permit from the state at all to do this?
No, because it's a man-made lined pond, so it's not a natural habitat. So.
No, I mean for, oh, I got you.
What's that?
I was thinking about actually removing the...
Oh, no.
Do you need a permit?
You don't have to.
So most...
And there's no endangered. We did a quick assessment of TNE species. There's nothing endangered. If there was something in the pond that was an endangered species or something like that, we'd have to involve Eagle or do something like that. But we're dealing with frogs, turtles, snappers, probably some fish.
For the audience, yeah.
There's probably some goldfish and things that have gotten in there that aren't necessarily, you know, something that we would necessarily need to relocate. But it's really a lot of frogs and turtles.
It's right out in front of the township building here. There is a lot of animals in there.
Yep.
You see them all the time. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is to approve the agreement with StanTech Consulting for emergency survey and civil engineering services for the Township Community Center Bathroom renovation.
So move.
Motion Rowe?
Support.
Sorry, support John. Sorry. Mr. Newman? Questions or comments?
Good evening, John Heinz again. Yes, this was a request to approve StanTech Consulting to provide urgent survey and civil engineering services related to the Community Center Bathroom renovation project. And this comes about after StanTech Consulting worked with JTW Pipes to cam the sanitary lines underneath the building as relates to this project. In doing so, the extensive damage under room 202, the senior coordinator office, board storage, lobby, and rackabout court was worse than we anticipated. Due to this, the request was brought forward to be able to keep the timeline moving forward with this project, to see the feasibility of bringing all the inside sanitary lines outside for the majority of this renovation project. There are going to be some points as located on the map below that show that inside pipe work will still need to happen to get the path of least resistance to the rest of the piping. But the goal of bringing the piping from in and around the building to the sanitary drain that's located on the backside of holes nine and 18 at the golf course.
Questions or comments? This is our question?
Yes, yeah, this is part of the bathroom renovation project.
The only little question I had is that, does this have any impact on the going out for bids later on on the agenda? Because I know that it also involves the bathrooms and...
It does. And the short answer is no. The reason why it was brought in such an urgent factor was to keep with the timeline of going to the board tonight to go out for bid and accepting the bid within 30 days. And I was going to talk about it more at that point, but this will not affect it because we're going to have to tier the acceptance, or not tier the acceptance, but tier the project priority when we accept a bidder and have the pre-construction meetings.
I understand. I just...
Because if we did not, if we don't approve it tonight and we actually have to go out to bid for the topo services, then that means that it's just going to add another one to two months onto the project.
Are you comfortable with proceeding?
I think other questions might be answered when we get to that agenda item, but I know that it's asked to be integrated together, what you're doing. And I just wanted to raise that question during the work session, but just...
Yeah, what year are the pipes and the community center, 40?
Yeah, they're original with the building, which I don't know the exact year it was open, but I imagine 1940 was...
I don't know.
I don't know if it was 40 or 42, because the picture in the lobby is from 1942.
So they're going to camera it and do the surveys of the actual building and location of all the utilities so that we can have it going forward if there are any other changes?
Yes, yeah, exactly.
Questions or comment? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
We can do number 12, 13, or 14 together. It's a request to confirm authorization for Circuit Court litigation to abate a public nuisance at 867 Derby Court, 1039 Parkwood Avenue, and 3110 South Lawn.
So move.
Motion Rowe?
Support.
Support Eldridge. These are public nuisance cases that come up in our neighborhoods that are often vacant or burned out, abandoned. And these three houses, we have tried to get cooperation, and one was a fire. And the goal is to rebuild them if you can. If not, demolition. And this will authorize to proceed to Circuit Court if necessary. Oftentimes, if we authorize Circuit Court owners, we'll talk to the township. But when we send letters and try to get compliance, sometimes that doesn't happen. But the goal is to have compliance and have the housing in good condition in our neighborhoods. Questions or comment? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item is a request to approve the agreement for election services with Washtenaw County.
So move.
Support.
Motion Rowe, support Eldridge.
Madam Chair, if I could just explain a little bit of this. Last year, we, our state voted on Prop 2. So for people in the audience, we're going to start having nine-day early voting in our state. So that means nine days prior to the election, you'll be able to come in. And it'll start on the second Saturday preceding. You'll come in to presumably this room here. You'll be able to receive your ballot and actually cast it into a tabulator. We'll be staffed just like a normal voting precinct. And if we enter into this agreement with the county, the state's incentivizing more of like county grouping of other municipalities for cost sharing and savings for us. We would be partnering, as it is presumed now, with Augusta Township. So Augusta Township presidents would actually be able to come here and vote in our building as well. With this agreement, the county will, you know, assign a rolling list of who's going to be supervising the sites by the day. And every municipality in our county is expected to enter into this sort of shared agreement, with the exception of Mylan, which is a city that's divided among two different counties. And then the city of Ann Arbor, just because they're their own, they have a lot of, they're prepared to handle their own situation. So if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer as best I can. The county deputy of elections wasn't able to be here tonight due to a scheduling conflict.
Any questions? So can, so Augusta and Ypsilanti, like, do you have to go, like, whatever municipality you're in, like, for this site? Do you have to go there? Or could somebody vote, like, in another site? Like, if you work somewhere, because since the county's running it all, or do you have to go, like, as it's outlined that way?
So there's still a lot of, like, things to work out, and a lot of that depends on the legislature actually having bills. Many of them have been passed, but they haven't actually been signed yet. And originally, that was the idea that was, like, sort of given, that anyone, say the city, that anywhere could come to an early voting site within our county and vote. But now it's looking to be more like these shared sites. So there's actually a tentative map. So Augusta would come here, and then the city in Superior would share. But that then brings up the other logistics part of it, which is partly where some of the cost savings comes from. But we'll have to use, we're thinking a ballot on demand printing system from Hart that other states use, and I'm insured that it's great and whatever. But I haven't seen it yet, and so I'm really a little anxious to see that. But if you come here and you're from Augusta, we should be able to print or provide you with a ballot, even though you're not normally an Ypsilanti Township voter. The only other logistic sort of kink in what they haven't worked out in the law is that if a person from Augusta comes here, and it's a Saturday, and they're not registered to vote, I cannot register them to vote, which, you know, just, it doesn't make it easy for the resident. It's just a learning curve, so we'll get there. And we've spent so much time, like, telling people, you know, like, you live here, and you live here, and this is where you vote. And so now this is kind of just changing that up a lot. But hopefully that was a long-winded answer to your question.
And then the other question I have was, like, who determined, like, the locations? Because I, like, the Augusta and the Ypsilanti Township one made sense to me. The Freight House one didn't make sense to me because you've got Salem, you've got Superior, and so your Salem's got to come farther. It just seemed to me, like, if you're organizing it, you'd probably want a Superior Township location because it's more central to where they're trying to send people. So that part just didn't make sense to me.
Yeah.
But it doesn't impact our residents necessarily. But I would think you'd want to make it more centrally located for, especially the group that's going to have to come the farthest, which would be Salem in that case.
I'm happy to provide that feedback as well. I know that our particular site, I thought it was important that we, like, you know, we want our residents to be able to come here, and we're happy to help out neighboring communities. So I think as it was evolving, you know, we had preliminary meetings. Everyone kind of talked about sites that they did have or didn't have. And a lot of it depends on, for me at least, is like, what property do we own and what can we secure every night? And so I'm not sure. I know that Andrew from the city sort of offered up, like, we could do the Freight House. And I'm not sure if that same, you know, feedback was received from every location. Yeah.
Other question?
Just thinking out loud. So does, would it increase more errors with us, with Augusta and Ypsilanti Township sharing the same place?
So it should not. The way that it'll work is that... The way that it'll work is that if, um, let's say you have a, here's your voting location and you and Debbie are both here to vote, you are an Augusta Township resident and Debbie lives here, you would stand in line just as you would at your voting location, you would provide them, you know, with your ID or sign the affidavit if you didn't have one, and they would look you up, provide the correct ballot within the system, and then provide that to you. And then same when, you know, the Ipsy Township resident followed behind you, they would then look, look them up in the qualified voter file and issue their ballot. So in theory, there should be no, you know, any other hardships, and especially if we're not having physical ballots, like, stored and having to sort through them, it sort of takes out the human error a little bit.
So there'll be no physical ballots?
There will be printed physical ballots, but you won't have, like, if you've ever seen my office during election, I've got stacks of ballots with different precincts and, and so if I'm looking you up and directly printing yours, like, hot off the press, it'll take away that, you know, pulling the wrong one or...
Right.
But good question. Um, and then just to, I guess, provide a little bit more is each night, the tabulator will be suspended, um, it'll be secured as they always are, um, so it'll be interesting.
Is there a separate tabulator for each, so Augusta tabulator and, or does it just know, the single tabulator knows which?
So the tabulators can be programmed to know two different municipalities, um, but the tabulators that we use here for early voting sites will be different than the ones, like, this will be a voting precinct on election day, and that tabulator will not be the same one that was used for early voting in this room, just as a matter of being able to follow back the, the count.
Who's providing that tabulator? Is it our tabulator or is the county providing the tabulator?
Um, the county is receiving, um, funding to help purchase, like, those one-time expenses of tabulators, and the county does know that we do have, like, a few extra tabulators, so they may approach us at some point to try and see if we're interested in selling them to them, but that's not anything that we've had formal discussion about yet, and the state is providing them with funding, so. Last thing is, since we're on the topic, we do have a November 7th election, which is kind of at the next, um, agenda item, but it is for Lincoln Consolidated Schools, for their operating millage, as well as a renewal of their rec millage. So if you do not live in Lincoln Consolidated Schools, do not be alarmed if you don't receive a ballot. There's no election for YCS.
I have a couple, just a couple of questions, and I, I know Heather tried to get the county to come and to be here to help answer some of the questions, and I'm probably contingent upon our attorney approval as well, but what are the hours of operation? Cause I don't see that.
So they have to be eight hours a day, and all, right now, they're slotted for nine to five within the document that we've been provided, but we are expecting to do a late day, whether that's like 11 to seven or, you know, one to eight, so...
And it includes Saturday and Sunday, correct?
Um, it starts the second Saturday pre, it will include two Saturdays and one Sunday. That's true.
Yeah, so it does give, if that's hours of operation. I see the cost is, um, estimated by the county at 145,000 and high and 102,000 low. It's not real clear who pays for it, I know, um, but I haven't really had the opportunity to discuss this, because we didn't get to discuss it in the work session, but I think it's a great idea, well, I think it's better than having your own to do it.
One of the things supervisor, some of the, that relates to the cost, and we discussed earlier, was the county will actually, you know, with our help at first, they're going to need help building their own list of election workers, because right now they don't employ normal election workers. Um, and so they will eventually be staffing those, and for the first in all of them, they will also be paying for those election workers. Once that's finalized, I will, I'm anticipating bringing something back to the board to see if our election pay sort of is reflective of what theirs is.
And early voting will happen in every election, and every election, this procedure is in process, will be in place?
Um, yes, and in the document, it talks a little bit about, um, special elections, like, say, um, Augusta's having an election and we're not, that'll just, you know, we'll work those situations out as they arise, whether they then move their early site to their building, or we still stay open and help partner with them, um, but each of those situations will sort of happen, um, we'll, we'll discuss them as needed.
That is, like, if they're not normally responsible for election workers, that's kind of a big deal for them to take that on, when the municipality is probably more experienced in doing that than the county does, so how is that going to work out, like?
So, um, I think that they'll be well-equipped with it, but building their list at first is going to be, I think, the biggest challenge. Um, and every clerk who's been on any of these meetings is like, you know, more than happy to try and help establish that list for them, or have, um, you know, senior poll workers that are really exceptional and, and independently able to work. So that'll be a big learning curve, but honestly, the entire Prop 2 is a huge undertaking for not only the county, but local clerks and, and the state as well. So we still have to make, um, on this election is our first time where there's an option to receive your ballot in the mail rather than your application, and so that gives us a whole new interface on the qualified voter file that's, you know, it's just, it's a lot of moving parts, but we're going to figure it out. It's going to be great.
As with all state laws, sometimes they put things in place with no funding. Right now, it looks like the funding will be taken care of by the county and they'll get reimbursement, but down the road, we need to somehow, yeah, because it's a mandate. They're doing a mandated service and they're supposed to, um, pay for it. I don't see the hours, what pages are?
And, hold on, I just had it. Just while I'm looking for that, the hour's really quick, and again, those aren't set in stone, because we are anticipating to have later, an evening time. The state did also agree, or Prop 2 mandated... Let me just back up. The state is going to reimburse us for some postage costs, but it will only be for the returned costs, not for the sending out costs, which you can imagine, we send out way more than we receive back. Brenda, it's on page 343 right here, but it just says nine to five for all of them.
Yeah, because this says that that has to be set before this is approved. Like, this agreement says that those things have to be set, and, but anyways.
Madam Chair, may I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Um, so is the, uh, yes vote agreeing to participate with this process, or is that process already been determined by what happened in the legislature?
The, is it okay if I? This is, this would be agreeing to partner with the county. Early voting has to happen no matter what, even if I don't like it or...
Yeah, I'm, I'm just, I'm hearing words that just make me feel uneasy. I'm hearing words like theoretically and should and ought, and I just feel like after the last election cycle, uh, which was, um, explosive and very contentious, um, I'm just very concerned about a process that does not seem to be locked down.
Madam Chair, if I, trustee Hunter, I completely agree with you, and, um, if anyone who's Dan or Brenda walks by my office, like, we need our legislature to swiftly, like, continue to defining how these things are going to be, um, done. We even have a legislative bill that would help us decrease the number of precincts that we have, but it wasn't effective immediately, it hasn't been signed by the governor, and so I, I cannot do any of it for 2024, which is such a, just disappointment for our taxpayers, for our residents, our election staff, um, but you know, that's, that's the, I know that's a really poor, but that, you know, like, ah, what are you going to do? But that's just how, how elections feel right now. Um, I think Prop 2 was a huge, huge undertaking for our state, and I don't know that it was, every piece of it was the most well-thought-out.
Sure.
But we're working through it.
And again, you asked them to come to the meeting, but they just couldn't accommodate it, and we have only until October to approve it, is that correct?
Um, we have until October 6th to approve it.
And our next meeting is?
The 3rd.
I didn't quite catch that.
This is no fault of the clerk's office. I'm, I'm a, the attorney, if he reviews it, he'll see some of the things that I see, I'm sure. It says, "Prior to the submission of the early voting plan, the county clerk and the clerks of the participating municipality will do the following things," and the number of tabulators and all those. So we're basically saying this is the proposed plan, and those are the proposed hours, right? Because you have to determine that prior to signing the agreement. Okay, alright.
But you've been able to give feedback on this process as our clerk, is that accurate or not accurate?
I have been able to participate in small groups, participation of Prop 2 and how that might work. The county is sort of steering the ship on this, I, you know, following the legislature, and I do feel comfortable, like, sharing my concerns with the county, and I think Ed is extremely receptive to feedback by any clerk.
Cause I, I feel similar to what trustee Hunter's expressed, that, um, it's so important for people to feel like the voting process is fair and it's followed too, and I'm not saying that anybody isn't, but I think a lot of change, and Prop 2 was probably passed because people wanted something, but the importance of people making, like, really feel like if we're changing everything, like, I don't know that the precinct thing probably is the worst thing, because if we're changing this and then you've got precincts decreasing...
We're not going to be able to.
Right, so I, I know that that probably would have been a nice thing, but it would have been another change that would have been hard for people, so however you can express to them the importance of, which probably all of us say, I mean, I, I was thinking the same thing you were thinking, trustee Hunter, how important it is for people to feel like their vote, um, is protected and it counts, and that, um, it's fair, there's a fair process, um, because as I spoke earlier in the work session, like, so much misinformation. So the more we can let people know what's happening and why, and be able to answer those questions, I think it would provide some relief. I think in some ways, that's just going to have to be something that heals, because people don't feel that way, many people don't feel that way. So there's going to have to be some healing, and part of the healing is accurate information, so...
Madam Chair, I do think it would be a great opportunity, and something that I would be interested in doing is having, like, you know, me and someone from the county clerk's department having, like, little, not in services, but like, little sessions, township halls with our, um, residents, just so they know the differences. Even the change from getting an absentee application to a ballot is a huge change, um, so we're happy to do that. And then just the, the opposite of this, like, if we didn't choose to do this, then it would still require us to do nine-day early voting, just all of the cost would be encumbered on us. So that's sort of like, the benefit of doing it is the cost savings and the shared participation, helping the, like, I see it as a benefit to Augusta Township residents too, so...
I'm not opposed to doing what's being proposed with the local clerks, I think it's a good idea, I just don't think it's as crystal clear as it should be. That's my biggest challenge with it, and I know it was yours too, you and I had, um, questions about it. We have to do it, if we're going to do it this way, we have to do it. And it sounds like we have time, one more meeting?
Yeah, and I, certainly I want, you know, attorney winners to provide feedback to, for anything that he has. I know, I think Michelle is who they would use, yeah, Michelle Billard. And honestly, I, I kind of am curious if other, I'm sure other people will have comments back for this, so...
So tabling it would not be, and maybe ironing out more detail with the county and having them come?
Yeah, and I'd be open to that, of course, and if anyone has, like, specific things, that they want answered, you know, either telling me now or sending them to me clarification so that I can, I can be really specific on the information that I'm bringing back and making sure it's accurate too.
Madam Chair? I'd like to make a motion to table if possible.
Motion to table?
Pending, pending feedback, uh, and, uh, maybe, um, a response from the county, uh, per what Heather is saying, to our next meeting.
Okay, there's a motion to table?
Support.
Support Eldridge, there's no discretion, so the next meeting, so everything, we can still finalize it, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 16 is request to cancel the November 7th work session and regular meeting due to the special election of Lincoln.
So move.
Motion row, support Eldridge. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 17 is request to set a public hearing date of Tuesday, October 17th, at approximately 7:00 PM to establish a special assessment for streetlights for Wood Lawn.
So move.
Motion row, support Swanson, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 18 is request to purchase furniture for the Community Network Center at 1405 Holmes Road in the amount of $5,595.78.
So move.
Motion row? Support Swanson. Other questions or comment? The flooring was installed today, um, additional painting has occurred at the site, and, um, we're looking to do an opening, hopefully, and start coordinating everything, um, before December. November is, is the preferred time. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 19 is a budget amendment, number 12, Kirk Row?
I have a motion to amend the 2023 budget, budget amendment number 12, move to increase the general fund budget by $29,800 to $14,653,388 and approve the line item changes as outlined. And these are all for election, or for funding our November election, um, as well as we need to purchase some envelopes and supplies for the February presidential primary that I believe is the 27th, please? 27th of February, which is another change. It's, uh, you know, earlier than it normally is, so that's, that's part of the reason, and in the future, we can plan to...
Motion row? Support Eldridge for the budget amendment. Questions or comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Authorization of bids, request to award the low bid for the fence project at the fire station on Hewitt Road in the amount of $21,300 and approve the change order for $500 for a total of $21,800 for the project.
So move.
Motion row?
Support.
Support Eldridge. Questions or comments? Associated Fence was the lowest bidder on the project. I'm sorry? And it's a local company. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number two, on authorization bids, we request to seek proposals for, um, to seek, to determine the actual cost for police services in Ipsilanti Township, as well as, according to the agenda items, seek proposals for a municipal police force feasibility study.
So moved.
Support.
Motion Ryan, support Eldridge, would you like to speak to it?
Uh, yeah, I, I'll go before, um, that does from Ernant. This kind of speaks to what the attorney spoke to during his report earlier, what trustee Swanson spoke about earlier in the work session. We already heard some of the misinformation come back, that this is simply to start a police department, that's not correct, and... is simply to start a police department. That's not correct in any way, shape, or form. A little over a year ago, the supervisor, as did other leaders of communities throughout Washtenaw County, received a notice from the sheriff indicating that costs were going to be increasing over the upcoming contract to levels that we just did not think were sustainable. Try as we might, for the last year or more, this police steering committee with chairman Newman, attempted to gain pricing from the Washtenaw County Sheriff. We did receive that pricing in, in a format that didn't break it down as defined as many of us had sought. The supervisor and I attended another meeting where the sheriff was making a presentation to leaders from throughout Washtenaw County who contract for those services. Again, at that meeting, the question was asked, can you break the cost down further instead of these blocks of dollars for certain areas? We were looking for specificity in those numbers because of what we saw eventually in 2025 or 26 could lead to the cost for a single deputy in excess of $240,000. Some of those costs currently are paid back to communities through the countywide mental health millage. That millage expires in 2024. There is no guarantee that that millage will be brought forth for voters again countywide, and even if it is, there is no guarantee that that millage would then pass. County commissioners have made it clear that they'll no longer use general funds to assist those municipalities that contract for police services with them, that would in some small way reduce those costs. We have tried multiple times to go through the sheriff's office, the sheriff in particular. When that didn't succeed, the supervisor, chairman Newman, myself, trustee Hunter, have met with county administrator Dill in an effort to get those costs broken down, in large part because of the position he holds. But secondarily, he was a member of the sheriff's office when the police services unit pricing method was put together. He was a part of putting those costs together. He tried to gain those specific cost breakdowns within each of those cost centers. He was unable as well to get that from Sheriff Clayton, who indicated that he had no intention of providing any further information or detail or specificity to not only Ypsilanti Township, but any of the contract communities within Washtenaw County. Because of all that, we have, when I say we, the members of this steering committee, trustees Newman and Hunter, myself, have begun to look at other municipalities throughout southeastern Michigan to see if we are receiving comparable costs for services at this time. Those initial comparisons indicated that we are paying a higher cost per deputy than other like communities that were contracting for services in their counties. As such, we brought it back to other board members to see if we could go out in a request for a proposal to have a consulting firm or a consultant come in, look at what we are currently paying for police services, the services that are being rendered, and how that compares to other communities throughout southeastern Michigan and the region. If those costs come back and show that we are in line with those, I don't want to speak for the other committee members, but I think we would be done at that point. If they don't, then we have to look at can we sustain the current model, or do we need to look at other alternatives? I think that's where people are thinking, that we're going out and automatically starting a police department, and that is not in any way, shape, or form what is taking place, irregardless of some of the comments that have gone throughout the community to unnecessarily upset people. This is simply a look, doing our due diligence. Our first statutory responsibility as elected officials is to be fiduciaries of the taxpayer money. That's simply all this is, is doing a look-through to make sure that the cost we are paying is correct for the services rendered and what like communities are receiving for those services. We then reached out to Earnat Consulting at our last meeting before this board to ask for approval, to have them come in, help us put together this request for a proposal, use their expertise in conjunction with our clerk's office, who does many of these RFPs, so that we can get it out to as many potential vendors that would like to look at this and see what they can provide to our community. Once that vendor is selected, they'll complete the report. We will then share it not only with this board, but with this community as a whole, so that what we're talking about and looking at is transparent to all residents of this township. I guess I would then defer to chairman Newman or trustee Hunter if they want to add anything before Ms. Earnat takes over.
You've said everything perfectly.
Thank you, I swear.
Yeah, I would agree. I just feel as though, well, just to extend that, the aim here is to make sure that we are getting the best value for our dollar, simply put. So, if we are, then great. And if we aren't, then let's look at what the alternatives for that could be. So, thank you.
And I would just add one thing. I would be negligent if I did not say this. This is not a reflection on the men and women that wear the uniform and go out every single day. Lieutenant Peltier is here, and he's heard me say this. This has nothing to do with their work on their end. It is simply making sure that we're paying the correct cost for those services. They do a tremendous job, day in and day out, and we could not be more appreciative. So, for anyone to suggest otherwise would just simply be erroneous and incorrect. So, thank you.
And I would just like to say, we do have a fiduciary responsibility to our residents, and this is a way of checking all options to, in the interest of the residents, in the interest of our residents.
Okay. So, I took all that feedback. I met with members of the committee and reviewed a lot of the records from the past 20 years of service to take a look at drafting this RFP. And a couple of things I want to bring out, you know, any of the 80s babies in the room, this reminds me of The More You Know, it's kind of, you know, the after-school program. But, all jokes aside, this has to go beyond just saying, what are the costs of policing? So, in order to provide that fiduciary responsibility, you need to take a look at, because this hasn't been studied, are you providing the right amount of service currently? So, you're currently receiving 35 deputies, but what is that, how is that derived? So, if you're going into the study to do an actual study, you need to know how many officers should be utilized in the community of approximately 60,900 square miles. So, it needs to be brought back to that level of what are the services nationally? What would the recommendation be for service? Are you meeting that service currently? If not, that may take you to a point where you go back to the county to negotiate the number of deputies you have, or look at your own. So, the purpose of the study is to come back with all of the information that could be used in a multitude of ways. So, that information should provide you a direct comparison of costs, and then it should also provide you recommendations, and then it should provide you a basic outline of if X, Y, if Y, Z. So, that's how I've set that up. The RFP itself, right now, requires public involvement, and it requires a public presentation of results. And part of that is gearing up to have a Q and A, right? Like, I've set up that this body needs the opportunity in a work session format to be able to ask the questions and give consultant enough time to go back, answer those questions, and then submit a final. So, you know, providing a final presentation is great, but if you're left with more questions than answers, what'd you pay for? So, that, that's how I've drafted the proposal. We provided it, I think about a week and a half ago, so I'm, this is not, this study is not for me, so I take nothing personally. Please let me know if there's something you'd like to see different, if there's areas that could be changed. Right now, I would look at suggesting to release the study at the beginning of October as an RFP, and then having responses back in 45 days. So, that would bring almost right to December, and you'd be looking at kicking off a contract in January.
Questions or comment?
Madam Chair, just Beth, if whenever you want to get with us, once we decide dates, like, please feel free to reach out to me and Lisa, and we'll talk about if you want to post it anywhere else also.
Yes.
We usually post on Bidnet, but if you have other ideas for this, like, small...
Yeah, I do have some directs that we can send out to, but I would like it all to come straight out of the township, so I'll work directly with you, Heather.
Thank you.
Or clerk Row.
I think I'm so concerned about the misinformation. I really am. That's not, that's not you. Looking at the title, and I'm thinking, like, when you look at the title alone, maybe that's part of it. So, I don't know whether, I don't, I'm not even aware of what I would suggest, but I think what I hear us saying, and what I think we're trying to do, is do some kind of a cost analysis, and that, that's a term that's used, and I may be using that wrong. But what we're hoping to figure out is exactly the way you've described it. And then I'm wondering, like, what's the through line? Because if we hire somebody to help us with this, which we need help with, we have to make sure that the way they're framing it and the way they're communicating it with people is exactly what we're saying here. We have not made a decision, but it is our duty to make sure that what we're paying for, that first of all, we've asked, could somebody just give us a clear breakdown of it? And we have tried on multiple occasions and have been told, no, on behalf of the residents. That is not okay.
Yeah.
It should be a really easy thing to do. In any other, most other places, like I said earlier, I'm a teacher. If you want to know what they're paying for me, what the cost to me is, you can go find that out. So, maybe the title, and then just what is going to help us keep that, whether we've got to make a statement, a formal statement, and we just have to make sure that that statement is always out there, that way, people can say whatever misinformation they want to do, which if somebody's got a motive to do that and cause that kind of chaos and harm, they're going to do it. But there should be a place where people can go back to and say, no, that is not the official work of what the board said they were going to do. And so, I'm, I could be wrong, but when I read that, it looks like, you know, we're looking how feasible it is for us to do that, where we want to know what are the costs for what we're currently doing, so that, so that then helps us decide what direction we're going to have to do, exactly like you said, trustee Eldridge. And I don't know if, you know, if somebody gets on and that's the first thing they look at, I don't know if that's what's going to cause more trouble for us.
I actually agreed. And in standing here, kind of listening to the conversation, I had jotted down comparison and feasibility, but I do like cost analysis. And like I said, this isn't my product, so I have no problem making any changes for a level of comfort. So, whatever the board recommends.
You're very attentive, cost analysis, because we're just trying to get data that's been unbelievably hard to get. Considering it is, we should be collaborating on behalf of the residents. If you are an Ypsilanti Township resident, you are a Washtenaw County resident, and the idea that those two levels have had a hard time working together just to understand things is absolutely inappropriate.
Well, and I agree. And I think the one area to caution, and just to air this out, is that even if Washtenaw County provided tomorrow and said, here's our list, these are our costs, you still have no basis on how those costs are actually derived. So, you know, having this document is not at all advancing to any level. This is really doing a due diligence, no different than the conversation you just had about elections. How much is it going to cost us, and what are we getting out of it?
But it does put it in a format where the public can see, oh, look, this is how they've outlined the costs in other communities. Why does our community look different?
Right.
And then the burden becomes on the individuals who didn't do it that way in the first place and are not sharing it with us. And I'm, my energy is not towards you.
Oh, I'm not taking...
I am so frustrated
Yeah.
with the idea that our residents need cooperation for our communities to be in a good place. And it feels personal. I don't know that for a fact, but it feels so personal, which, I don't care what they think of me. What I care about is that I represent the residents in this community, and they're not willing to help us take care of our residents in the way that we think they need to be, and the way that residents elected us for four years to do it. So, I'm not upset with you, Beth. I appreciate what you've done. But this is just so unnecessary.
It really is.
And now it's necessary because of the support and the help that we're not getting from other people who are elected to take care of our people in the same way we are. That's what my frustration is. And it's around public safety.
Yeah.
Everyone in Washtenaw County is concerned about public safety in various forms, how they think public safety should be enacted. There's a lot of different thinking about that. But the idea that people are not concerned about safety is not what I see, hear, read, all of that. So, the idea that we should be cooperating around that, and there's no cooperation, is so distressing.
I'm a Washtenaw County resident, and I'm very concerned.
And I would share, this is not the first time that this township has done this. We did it roughly 11 years ago, and I think it was done somewhere around 20, 25 years ago. So, this is something that happens on a sporadic cycle to make sure that we're in our right frame. And I know other municipalities in the county that contract are looking at us as well, and waiting to see what this shows, because it will affect them in the same manner.
The difference between this time and the other, the last time, we really were able to work together to get analysis and get, I call it forensic audit, almost, of the cost. And this time, there's, it's total shutdown. I'm not giving you any more information. It's almost $6 million. It's our largest expenditure. Public safety is our number one concern. And the only thing I would, and I'm not sure if it's in here, so we do what's called a PSU, public...
It's in there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that includes a number of other so-called services. So, we have to, you know, have that in.
Vehicle detective sergeant, yes. So, the PSU is in there as a unit price.
Yes. And it also includes in the contract that the sheriff, single-handedly, has the authority to change how, or deploy, how they deploy. So, if they're in another community a lot, there is literally nothing we can do about that. And I'm not sure if that, I mean, I understand automatic response for emergencies, but, for example, our detective bureau is now policing in another area to help with their issues. And, and I don't know if that's a normal thing, because that hasn't happened here, you know, since I've been elected. But does that happen in other communities where a police, your police department actually becomes a detective bureau for another community? And I just don't know enough about what other communities do. I do know that if residents want speeding enforcement at neighborhood watch meetings, which we receive a lot of requests, and the ability to actually, you know, change the behavior and make it safer on the roads is important, and how do you align those priorities with the current con... with the current contract, which we have no control over, and other communities? And maybe we can even look at possibly making recommendations to change the current way it's written. And it's a lot of information to ask, but I have concerns with what's going on. And it's never gone on in the history, since I've been elected, the amount of discommunication or complete non-communication on issues with public safety, and it's concerning. And our residents want certain things, so when we ask on their behalf, we would like them to happen. Our lieutenant does whatever he can, but he has to do what's in the framework of the sheriff, and they do a good job the best they can.
And I don't think you know what demands to bring to the negotiation table until you have that comparative analysis and feasibility of what you need. So my instinct is that the 35 deputies you have is a little low for the area that they're patrolling, and the fact that you're not guaranteed that time at the sheriff's discretion, they can bank it to be used at any time during the length of the contract, is very ambiguous. So I think those are answers that you definitely need to have quantitative and qualitative analysis for.
Right, we contract for 38 at, since 2018.
38, yeah.
No, we did.
Right.
So from 2018, we authorized 38 deputies. We've never had 38 deputies.
No.
So here we are, fast forward, and we reduced it to 35.
Right.
But we still have a budget if they can ever get up, and they're trying, and that, there's a lot of issues surrounding that, but we still have to pay for whatever. We don't get billed for 30, we get billed for 35 or 38, whatever we contract for, even though we might have 28 or 29. So those are the kind of nuances in a contract that seems imbalanced.
Well, the other point is the charter, so if you have 35 deputies, but there's only 38 at roll call, are, let's say, Ypsilanti Township and Syo Township, are you both paying for the same people on that shift? So I'm loosely saying Syo, because I, but.
And we don't know until the analysis is done.
And that's some of the things, Beth, we, again, we contract for 35, we've not had 35 since I've been in this position. So we, sheriff banks those hours. We're expected to adhere to a contract exactly as it's written. There's nowhere in that contract that allows for bankable hours. There's nowhere in that contract that allows for it. And is, the board's heard me say many times, nobody in this audience, nobody in this township would run their house and their budgets in their own homes this way, where you bring a vendor in and just say, do what you want to do. You know, we just wouldn't do that. We have spec, you know, specifics on how we want those vendors to respond, and the response has always been, we're going to police one community the same way we police another community. And you just can't do that, because every community has its different things that take place within it. You can't treat them the same. So, thank you for taking this on.
And we greatly appreciate the police services and all the work that the three members have put in thus far, and thank you, Beth, for bringing this forward.
I would just like to say, one of the requests that we requested from the sheriff's office was to see who was assigned to Ypsilanti Township of those deputies, and of course, we never got that information.
Mr. Winner?
Madam Chair, I, I guess by being, if you're in one place long enough, you kind of see a lot of things that maybe at the time you don't realize, they may come back around 20 years later. But back in February this year, when the Township Board appointed the Police Services Committee, the mission statement was in part to review all costs associated with the police services unit in the recently approved four-year contract with the Washtenaw County Sheriff of Washtenaw County in December of 2022. And those numbers at 20, for 2023, without the so-called subsidy per PSU is $208,000 for this year, $219,000 in next year, $231,000 in 2025, and $244,000 in the year 2026. So they have determined already, absent a cost subsidy, absent the mental health village subsidy, that the true cost for a PSU in 2026 is $244,000. Well, back in 2006, when the PSU model was, first came into being, I have the document from that study, the history overview, and in 2007, when they first developed the concept of PSU, it was developed by Plant Moran, who wanted to figure out, what is the cost needed to deploy a deputy sheriff into the field? And that was the big consideration, all these different metrics. But in 2007, the cost for a PSU was $94,000. Okay, so you fast forward, we understand about inflation, we understand about how things continue to go up, but in a span of about 14, 15 years, you've gone from $94,000 to where, and this year, it's $208,000, the $244 price tag in 2026. 2026, that's an $8 million cost to the township. And I think, again, the mission statement was to find out, what is the cost associated for a PSU, so you're getting an apples-to-apples, you know, analysis. Tonight, we talked about the budget, if you look at the L4029 that Giovanna spoke about, of course, you'll see all the different villages, where you have the fire department at 3.08, solid waste 2.37, general fund .97, sheriff's department police is 5.5570. By far the largest, a village vote, by far the largest amount of dollars this township is spending is on police services. So I think right now, to say that it's not sustainable at this rate of $244, if it comes, if it comes down to it in 2026, and if there is no so-called subsidy, if already determined it's $244, it's not going to go in reverse, it's been going up since 2007. And so you have to have some type of a analysis performed, and I think the way you describe it, the way you entitle it, it does matter, because words do matter. But I think right now, the intent goes back to what the board did in February this year, when it's basically review all the costs associated with the police services unit. That definition has changed over the course of the 14, 15 years. If I go back to the very beginning, it was defined as 1,800 hours per deputy. You'll see those definitions used in the succeeding time period. So I don't even know right now, if I sit here tonight, if I can really tell you what, from the county standpoint, what is the true definition of a police services unit? I'm not sure I know what that is. And so I think right now, the information is critical to make good decisions, when you see at the village rate, the Township Board is asking the taxpayers to continue to support, and they have supported it. They support the police, they support the fire. But at $8 million a year, I just don't think it's going to be sustainable unless we really, you know, at 32 deputies right now, it's not fair to the deputies, you have a population of nearly 60,000 people. So I think right now, the information is critical, and how you frame it's really even more critical. And I think right now, that these numbers, going back to 2007, show a pattern that is going to be just not, not sustainable, I don't think. And that's why I think it's so important that the committee is showing good faith in trying to obtain this information. I know John Newman spent a lot of time, Stan spent a lot of time, and I know that Elizabeth from Supervisor Stumble's office sent a lot of documents to me from other communities, trying to just help us understand better what it is that goes into it. So the decision the board's being asked to make tonight did not come about lightly, haphazardly, or without, you know, meaningful thoughtfulness going into it. And at the end of the day, the question is, how do you, how did you get the number of $244? Just show me the number, show me the money, show me how you got there. And it shouldn't be that complicated, because if you have a number that you've already predicted, this is, these dollars are for all political purposes, they've already been encumbered by this township when you signed that four-year contract. And, you know, so they're encumbered, and they're committed. And at the same time, is that if, if they've determined that number, it shouldn't be that difficult for someone to tell me, how did you get 208 in 2023? And how do you go from that, there, to 208, to $244, you know, three years later? Just tell me, show us. And it's, I think it's a necessary expense for the board, you have to incur to do this. I feel bad that the township does have to do this, because it's something that, quite frankly, when you're a vendor, as Stan says, you should be more than willing to show somebody, you just, you approve contracts all night long, everybody shows you their numbers, they show you what their cost, they show you phase one, phase two, phase three. You just approve for a fence contract, working down as to what fence is going to cut. I'm not equating that with everything is the same, but there is, the point is, there's got to be a simpler way of at least just showing, how did you arrive at that number? You may not like the number, and you may not agree with the number, but you at least got to be able to show it. That's why I think that trying to achieve here, and working with the committee, and vendor's office with Elizabeth, trying to get the information out.
And I think it's changed in policing in general, and priorities in general at the county level. We have to make sure that we always have police protection, you know, that's the best protection we can have, and it's reliable, not only for our deputies, because there's always different conversations going on, and I'm not sure, you know, what the priority is. And I think the contract that we enter into should spell it out more than it does now, especially when it comes to how to suggest and work together, collaborate on how to patrol in the township, and we have no input or control over it. So I think that's a little, getting a little scary for us.
Well, and just a quick cursory of the math, Doug, from 2006 to the current year, and going out to 2026, it's somewhere between a 55 and a 72% increase. Just show me how you arrived at those numbers.
I doubt the officers are receiving that.
No, no, it's not the officers, that's why you put the money in. That's the question.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, can I ask one more question for clarification? I don't know how you establish review committees, so how, how would you do a review committee when the proposals come back?
Well, we have a police committee.
Okay, that's, I want to specify that in the paperwork, so I just wanted to.
Oh, good question.
Confirm that.
All right.
Okay. I'll just say, I think I'm very concerned about how this is shared, so I know that, like, we had a conversation about minutes and what's in the minutes, so whatever the purposes of this, we have to be ahead of communicating with the public on why we're doing this, because I'm not, I don't want to rely on the newspaper that we basically don't have. We should be, I don't know if it's, whatever we need to do to make sure that the reason why we're doing this tediously has gone over as far as what we say, because words do matter, and then how that gets released and circulated, then that helps tell the story. And so if somebody looks at our packet, or they look at this, they're, like, they're going to make their own determination, so just, we have to be really clear, and then that also comes back to us. Like, I appreciate that Attorney Winters was able to go back and say, this is what we said we're doing. We should have the same thing moving forward on this. This is why we're doing it, this is what we're doing, thank you for the work you've done on this, Beth. But we can't underestimate how important it is to make sure that the community, our residents, understand why we're doing this, because we are doing it for the purpose of protecting their financial resources that they've invested and allowed as our fiduciary responsibility.
Trustee Swanson, would you want to put together, would you want, I can take, like, the first paragraph of the actual document, if you want, put that up on the website, you know, just as part of a public notice, that bids will be released, and then just put the purpose, maybe take that first paragraph.
Trustee Hunter made the motion, I second, and I would make a friendly amendment that, for this one issue, that our minutes are verbatim, so it encapsulates all the discussion and the minutia of it, for clarity.
We have a motion and support. Did we answer the question for Beth?
No, it's okay.
I did, when we post our bids on, I was just trying to, when we post our bids on the website, we, we just redirect them.
Right.
So I don't know, I think the bid would do more, like, press releases, but I don't know what the police service. Oh, sorry, that's not on, if the police services committee wants to do, you know.
Maybe that's how, maybe that's how you do it, on the website, is just announcement from the police committee, police steering committee, just as an announcement, and then the link to BidNet.
Right.
Again, I can give you a call on Thursday, and we can figure out the dates and get the language straight. I think I heard that cost analysis and feasibility would be the title. Is that a comfortable?
Sure.
Do you want comparative? Okay. Comparative cost analysis and feasibility study will be the official title.
Sounds good. We have a motion, support, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Beth. Number three is request to seal bids for the renovation of the community center, 200 hallway, and community center bathrooms, and this is ARPA funding.
So moved?
Support.
We have a motion by Rowe, support by Eldridge, to go out for bids, and the bids will be brought back.
Yep.
Any questions or comments? Hearing them? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Under other business, we have the request to approve Gov HR to assist a human resources department in completing a salary benefit study for the TPOAM bargaining union as outlined in the letter of agreement.
So moved?
Support.
Motion Rowe, support Eldridge. Discussion. And this is already budgeted. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Motion to adjourn.
No questions, okay.
Motion to adjourn, is there a support? There's a motion and support to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Wait, 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 but no, 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 no. We don't get any word from the cameras? Are you tired of listening to that? You want to say, I appreciate?
Can you put your mic on?
I appreciate the residents coming out and talking about the DTE issue. I know that at the Neighborhood Watch meeting last night with Wes Willow, we're hearing similar comments from a lot of residents, and asking for our help, even if it's an area that we're, that we don't see as our responsibility. I think what's happening is residents are getting the runaround. They were, I mean, all the flooding, the backing up, there were some communications, there were some interactions with Yucca that didn't feel right to residents, and so people are being told, like, well, that's Yucca, or that's the Drain Commissioner, that's DTE, or that's, and I think that it may be true that it doesn't fall in our particular place, but anything that we can do to be helping leverage this idea that it's not okay in our community is really important. So I just know that it's heartbreaking to hear the things that people are saying, and of course, when there's a problem, they're going to say, well, it's somebody out. That's not okay. Like, our residents, just like we're saying right now, we pay for one thing, and we're not getting what we say. The residents feel the same way about it, and it's not okay to be thinking, well, somebody's got to get a generator, somebody's, that's just not an okay way to go. So just know that the residents are really frustrated and upset, we all know, because we're hearing different things, but somehow, we have to figure out how we're going to push on that.
No one at the township told them that, right? It was at Yucca. I just want to make that clear, for clarity.
Like Ms. Kaiser said, you know, there's just a hole, somebody needs to help with the hole, and make sure, she, people are stepping out to help, and then they're stuck in an abyss, right? And waste management, I have been called repeatedly by residents over the same issue. I've personally gone out to go pick it up myself. It's a horrible, disgusting. It's a horrible, disgusting thing to have to go pick up trash that's dumped out and I'm laying in the road, and we're, we're being told they're going to go back out and get it. And then I don't feel good about somebody's garbage sitting out there. So I've gone three times, I think, on the west side and gone and picked up garbage after I've heard it. We're paying a lot for a service that, and when they dump those big bins to their advantage and savings, because nobody's got to get out of a truck, nobody's got to do anything. So they're recouping some savings, I'm sure, in labor costs because you're just driving the truck down. But they're big bins. So like, I've gone, like, I've decided on my own, I got to make sure any of my recycles are kind of in a paper bag, you can't put another bag in it to make sure they stay kind of intact, so by the time they dump, things don't fly off. But, you know, the one that I cleaned up was a, was a, was a garbage refuse. The recycles, I understand a little bit more, but like, we're talking a lot of trash, like, it's not doing what it's supposed to do, and we're paying a lot for it. So thank you for listening.
Thank you. And we will, we do have a meeting scheduled with Waste Management due to all the issues that we've had. And I'm sending an email, like I do, to DTE and always asking them to do an analysis on the number of outages and what's a, what's a cause of it. Because I know storms are part of it, but if you have vines all the way around it, you know, that's, that's just maintenance, like our residents said, so.
Still want to hear it's a five, it's a 100-year, 500-year storm, because we've had two 500-year storms in less than five years. So they, they're sick of that phrase, too. So if our infrastructure isn't working, then we have to figure that out. Like, if, you know, we have to, we have, we're behind the, we're behind the eight ball trying to figure out how we're going to prepare for these storms that are most likely to keep coming. So we need to get that figured out. And if, if the federal government and the state government has oodles of money for infrastructure, those are the things that we need to be making sure get in our, in our local community so that we can really help people, because it's very distressing. And a lot of it is in neighborhoods that are the dense neighborhoods that built this township and literally put cars on the roads and did a lot of stuff to help people, and that's their financial investment in their home. And it's just not okay for that to be happening.
We have a motion in support to adjourn. All in favor?